Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Doug Chipman, Mayor of the City of Clarence, and it's my pleasure to welcome you to our council meeting online tonight. In accordance with our usual procedure, please join me in the council prayer. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vow safe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of City of Clarence. Amen.
Amen.
I acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of this land in which we meet tonight, and pay respects to elders, past and present. Tonight, we are live streaming this meeting on YouTube, and a copy of the full agenda is available on council's website. A copy of motions up for decision will also be available on the feed. Voting will occur electronically via the chat bar on the side of your screen. Before moving to the start items on the agenda, first item one, apologies. Alderman James is an apology for tonight. In regard to item three, mayor's communication, I will table a list of significant meetings held during the last three weeks. Moving now to the start items, which we'll deal with as an omnibus motion. First is the confirmation of minutes for the 9th of June as circulated, be taken as read and confirmed. Does anyone have any matters to raise in regard to the previous minutes? Moving on to item four, that council notes the workshops conducted on the 15th, 22nd of June, and the agenda brief on the 26th of June. Any comments in regard to the workshops? Moving on to item six, the tabling of petitions, general manager.
Thank you, mayor. We have one petition tonight that has been received from 24 signatories requesting council to remove the large ucliptus tree adjacent to 26 Marana Road in Lindisfarne and replace it with a more suitable species. I need to note that while that petition is complying, there are also three pages which are scanned copies, and we don't have the original paperwork, and that contained an additional seven signatures. As is usual, we'll provide a report to council within the next two meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, could I just have that clarified? It's 26 Marana Road?
That's right.
Not Melana Road?
No, it's Marana Road, yes.
Marana Road. And which suburb is that?
Lindisfarne.
Lindisfarne. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other concerns regarding that item? Moving on to item 10, reports from outside bodies from the single and joint authorities. Alderman Walker, do you care to make a report tonight?
No, we'll hopefully have one by the next meeting.
Thank you. In regard to Tasmanian Water Corporation, I have nothing to report at this meeting. In regard to the Greater Hobart Committee, there is an action sheet from our last meeting on the 16th of June included in the agenda. Moving on to 10.2, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. Are there any reports, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will have minutes from the Richmond Advisory Committee, the Community Health and Wellbeing Committee, and the Cultural History Committee.
Thank you, Alderman Chong.
And Alderman Von Berto, Mr. Mayor, I have minutes from the Clarence Positive Aging Advisory Committee, and I've provided those to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berto. There being no other reports, I'll move on to reports of officers, item 11, 11.1, that the information in the weekly briefing reports for the 8th, 15th, and 22nd of June be noted. Any concerns in regard to the weekly briefing reports? In that case, I'll seek a motion that the recommendations of all the start items be approved.
So moved, Mayor.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Pearce, seconded Alderman Von Berto. If I could have a voting box, please.
Mayor, if I can just interrupt momentarily, I've just had a call from Alderman Blomley, who's having trouble with his connection tonight and logging in. So he's absent from the meeting at this point.
Noted. Thank you.
I think I'm back.
Voting is open in regard to the omnibus start items. Alderman Blomley?
Thank you.
Another 15 seconds?
Well, all right, can I have a... Yes, I've got it.
Okay, voting's closed. It's carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on back through the non-start items now. The next item on the agenda is item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or closely associated. Are there any declarations of interest? There being none, moving on to public question time. Item 7.1, public questions on notice. There are two in the agenda from Dr. Costello, and I'll call on the general manager at 7.2 to provide a response, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to know before we proceed any further that within the agenda, Dr. Costello was referred to as Mrs. Costello. That's obviously an error, and I apologise for that. In terms of the first question, the question was, what communication has council had since the 1st of October 2020 with the Kangaroo Bay proponents and University of Tasmania on the likely commencement date for the development or the necessity of an extension from November 2020? The answer to that question is communication with the Kangaroo Bay Hotel Development proponents is ongoing. Communication at this stage is commercial in confidence. The second question was, when will council have advice on the process to follow in activating the contracts buyback clause? The answer to that question is advice will be provided to council prior to the 14th of October, should it become necessary to provide any advice.
Thank you. There's no action at item 7.3, 7.4, questions without notice. General manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three questions without notice. The first two questions come from Mrs. Denise Hoggan, who says in her question, in June 2018, Greening Australia, in a natural values report of the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Area, brought to council's attention the presence of six declared weeds, their GPS locations, and their densities. Miss Hoggan's two questions are, have these declared weeds been eradicated as required by law? And if no, why not? And if yes, what was the precise cost of such eradication? Those two questions will be taken on notice, Mayor.
Thank you.
The third question that we've received comes from Miss Ella Van Tierenen, and she asks, the COVID crisis and temporary cessation of dining meal availability has seen a significant increase in takeaway food consumption. Takeaway coffees have also been the only option, with disposable cups being provided and the option of taking your own keep cup being discontinued for hygiene reasons. Some stores, which were previously allowing customers to bring their own containers and purchasing items at the butcher or deli, have also reverted to providing single-use plastic packaging. I'm asking whether the Clarence City Council will consider a single-use plastic ban like the Hobart and Launceston City Councils have done. That question will also be taken on notice, Mayor.
Thank you, general manager. Item eight, deputations by members of the public. I understand there are none?
There are none.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, motions on notice. Alderman Edmonds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish to move amended motion, which removes point four from the motion in the agenda paper.
Do I have a second, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Alderman Kennedy, thank you. Alderman Edmonds, you have the floor?
Thank you. I know I've got a big meeting, so I'll keep my comments as brief as possible. Clarence is obviously a big city with a very small chamber. We don't necessarily follow a timetable with the meeting, the way our meetings roll, so you're never really sure what time something might happen. People who are interested in what's happening at our meetings, whether they're ongoing fans of what we do, or if they're just worried about one particular motion or decision, you know, travelling from places like Otago, South Arm, Seven Mile Beach, et cetera. Often, they've got families to look after, and this isn't obviously a very convenient time for them. And also, with what's been happening with COVID-19, there's, you know, people want to be pretty precautious and are sometimes fearful about having to enter public spaces. I think through the efforts of many people, and not least the Clarence IT department, our live meetings since we've moved to this platform have been really well received and have run really smoothly with the perhaps exception of five minutes at the start of this meeting for one of our Alderman. You know, I think there's no putting the genie back in the bottle on this. I think people expect it. They probably expected it before coronavirus. And I certainly think that now that we've done it, I don't think there's any turning back. And I think really, in the interests of, you know, democracy and transparency, that this is something that we should continue to do. And really, all the feedback that we've received has been positive. Point one is pretty self-explanatory, that we in principle accept that live meetings are here to stay. Point two, again, pretty self-explanatory, that, you know, when we have deputations or questions on notice, I think it's worth investigating whether people can submit them as a video or audio recording, rather than the general manager having to get too tongue-tied reading out. You know, because there could be some meetings with quite a lot of deputations. And I think if people can't be in the chamber, that they should be able to submit things audio visually, just as much as if they prefer to do it via text. Point three, again, pretty self-explanatory. You know, this is an interesting time for this to happen in terms of our budget processes. So I think it's only fair to give GM and other staff a chance to go away, look at what's required, and then come back and talk to us. I know there's some talk that there might be some other money set aside for IT that would become redundant if we were to do this. So I think it's great that the general manager can come back and report to us, and then we can hold a workshop about how we do live meetings going forward. I'll just briefly touch on the explanatory notes, even though they are in the agenda paper. I just think that what we've done in the past two months, or however long it's been, has been pretty seamless, and it's set a precedent now that I really don't think there's any coming back from. So I think it's good that we get on the front foot that when, you know, when we can possibly go back to the chamber or another place, that the community probably expects that this stuff will be up live. And if not live, at the click of a finger, you know, the next morning first thing. Just one brief comment on why number point four was taken out, just based on the feedback of colleagues. This was set out basically to sort of put it on the radar of the local government minister, that, you know, that these things aren't going to be simple going forward. You know, like, let's say that one of us is red flagged at one of our Friday briefings, and then none of us can attend a meeting. Could be a bit of a tricky thing to manage. But I think on balance, it's point four was probably getting into territory where I was trying to solve problems that aren't really in my remit to solve. So I don't like seeing people do that at other levels of government in any country, and I'm not going to do it tonight. So with that in mind, this is quite a simple motion about, do we want to keep going live? Let's find out how much it costs or what's required, and then let's make it happen.
Thanks, Alderman Edmonds. Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to commend Alderman Edmonds on the motion. I support it. I think flexibility must be the way forward, and I think he summed it up perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speakers indicating at this stage. Alderman Mulder, followed by Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really only have one question, which has arisen out of Friday's agenda briefing. And that relates to whether the insurance advice that was forwarded and circulated by Alderman Von Berto, just as a question, which you may not be able to answer at this point, but does the general insurance and the public liability and insurance by which Alderman operate and do their business, does that extend to sort of actions for defamation or similar in council meetings?
General manager, if you've got a response to that, please.
I'd need to take advice from our insurers on that, Mayor, and report back through the workshop that's proposed if we proceed.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Yeah, look, there's a couple of key points in here. It's in principle. It's not locked and loaded going to be definitely happening. It's just saying that the vibe is that there is benefits to the community in having this live, rather than having to trudge into a rather compact and intimate council chamber. It's looking at options, and I think the idea of, you know, deputations actually being submitted beforehand, audio visually, is fine. Now, I'm generally a fan of free speech, but if there's some seriously crazy within that deputation, well, there's almost like a valve to say, if we put this up, there's going to be really bad consequences. So I think people should be relaxed on that front. And then point three, investigates what is required, and then come back to a council workshop. There's more exit doors on this than a council-compliant building. And as such, I think people should feel confidence to support it. I intend to do so.
Thank you. Alderman Von Berto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I can't support it, particularly in relation to point one. I see the in principle not in the same manner as Alderman Walker. I actually see it that it's an overarching, we support it, and that then we look at all of the aspects required of it. As was noted, I actually forwarded to all of the Alderman over the weekend advice that we got in 2015, when we first set up the policy that we now work under, which is the audiovisual recording of council meetings policy, the 13th of July 2015. We had a workshop on the 25th of May 2015, and we were provided with advice from our insurers of the time, MAV. And they made it very clear that beware of live streaming from the perspective of privacy, personal information protection, and from possible defamation cases. And it relates to two aspects. It relates to what Alderman and officers may purposefully or inadvertently say, and it relates to what members of the public, when they speak at the council meetings, may say. And in the second instance, it's related to that we are the publishers of that information. If it is defamatory, it's not about council, actually, being defamatory. It's about the person concerned, but we are the publishers, and therefore we have involved them. So at the time, in 2015, it was definitely the reasoning behind why we have the four days in which to consider what is within the council meeting. And that's up to relevant officers, and with a final sign-off by the general manager. I can see that we might be able to lessen the number of days, but that would create more administrative work for certain officers. So I actually think we need to be very careful in relation to looking at ongoing live streaming of meetings for this particular purpose. Obviously, the general manager will get an updated legal and insurance advice if this motion is successful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. Mayor, like Alderman Kennedy, I'd like to congratulate Alderman Edwards, the Edmonds, rather, the mover of this motion. We live in a digital age, or the digital age, and thank goodness. It means, it has meant that over this pandemic, we've been able to meet like this and ensure the continued good governance of our city. For someone like me, my kids are in a different jurisdiction. It's meant through FaceTime, I've been able to have over the past 14 weeks regular contact with them, albeit that's a very substitute, I must say, for one-on-one contact. But the genie is out of the bottle. Live streaming and meeting as we are now, an online platform, is here to stay, and I think that's a good thing. Earlier today, I had a conversation with a number of colleagues of the General Management Committee of Local Government Association of Tasmania. And this Thursday, we'll be in Launceston, meeting the Premier as part of the Premier's Local Government Council Meeting. And I flagged with colleagues that I would actually like to raise in that forum with the Premier and the Minister for Local Government, the Honourable Mark Shelton, that elected members should be able to video conference into a meeting in some circumstances. And secondly, to go to Alderman Von Berto's point, that some form of privilege should be considered to be attached to council meetings to avoid principally nonsense code of conduct claims. Of course, at the moment, whatever we say in the chamber, if it is defamatory, no privilege is attached to that, so action can be taken, whether it's livestreamed or not. Like many colleagues, when we first moved to this online platform, at the very start of the COVID-19 pandemic, I received numerous calls from residents and emails congratulating us on taking this step because, for the reasons outlined by Alderman Edmonds, this is a contemporary way that we're able to engage and keep our citizens engaged with the decision-making of this body. Mr. Mayor, when we were first elected some two decades ago, in October 2000, it is that long ago, although I've had a small break. Who can forget the people that would roll up every single council meeting, every three weeks? The Mrs. Grimes, the Mrs. Andrews, and for them, it was something that they enjoyed participating in. This process and this platform will allow many more residents, like the June Grimes and the Wendy Andrews, to be involved in the decision-making process of our great city. And democracy ain't perfect, but it's better than all the rest. And I think that we should warmly welcome any platform that enables more citizens of Clarence to be involved in the decision-making of our great city.
Thanks, Alderman Blomley. Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To support this motion, I believe that it's appropriate for people to be able to watch the meeting from elsewhere, rather than having to come into the chamber, particularly in these times where we have to be careful with social distancing. I particularly appreciate Alderman Edmonds' point that we have to have contingency plans for if we are unwell or test positive to COVID. We don't want to share that with our colleagues, but we're not necessarily too sick to attend. And it makes sense to be able to, in these times particularly, to be able to attend by video. I did ask a question of the general manager at the briefing on Friday, which was for some information about other councils that live stream. I'm not sure, Mr. Nelson, if you have that information available, but I would be interested to have those stats, please.
No, I don't have those available at the moment. Alderman Warren?
If you could take that on notice for another time, please.
Perhaps they could be included in the report, general manager?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Warren. Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'm like Alderman Von Berto. I cannot support this tonight because I would have rather preferred that we went to a workshop, discussed all the issues, specifically the insurance issues, which we were told about. I know not a lot of Alderman were on council at those stages in 2015. It's changed a lot since then. But I really think we have to be very careful. And if we'd had the workshop first, worked out what our insurance is telling us, and then saying, like Alderman Blomley said, if we've got some protection like Parliament has, which we do not have, then I would probably support it. But at the moment, as it is, I cannot support it tonight.
Thanks, Alderman Pearce. I can't see any other speakers. Alderman Edmonds, write a reply.
Yep, thanks, everyone. I'll just run through some of the issues that were brought up in order. I think Alderman Mulder's question about insurance advice would be something that would come back to the workshop that's talked about in point three. Regarding the legal advice from 2015, I took the time to read that, and I thank you for sending it, Alderman Von Berto. Essentially, I didn't change my mind for the reason that the world's changed a lot in five years, let alone the last five months, and let alone the last five weeks. And I kind of think in a way that this is the whole problem with the way that we can sometimes be perceived is that things are happening out of sight, or in the dead of night, and things like that. I just think we've got to open the doors, and I think as Alderman Blomley sort of referred to, and just let it, you know, open ourselves up to this. If live streaming's an issue, then what have we been doing for the last few months? I think that we probably would be a good idea to get, if required, a workshop where we got some legal advice around what is defamation, et cetera. But, you know, anything said on the record is discoverable, and we're potentially liable. If someone said something at a council meeting that wasn't live but was recorded, I'd be interested in the conversations that they have to have when they want to access that recording, because I also think that you'd probably get into trouble if you start editing what is a democratic meeting. We've done it now. We're doing it. I think we've got to think before we speak. And look, if we can get some form of privilege through council that can be worked on at a high level of government, then that sounds great. But I really, I think as myself and Brendan said, you know, the genie's out of the bottle on this one. You know, in the interest of the community engagement that we've got, transparency, democracy, this is here to stay. I think the mayor, at the very first meeting that we had, made some remarks to the public about the fact that we'd like one of the legacies of this term of our council to be that we improved our communication. Well, here's a slam dunk on that front, I believe, that nothing can get lost in the interpretation if everyone's watched it live. A lot of other issues have been raised and I think they're really constructive. And I thank people who did raise them with me over the weekend. I've tried to keep the motion simple. However, the workshop could be all encompassing of all those issues. I mean, you know, this is a pretty big deal. But, you know, I'll just come back to it. If it was such a big deal, we shouldn't have been doing it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a voting box, please, for Alderman Edmund's motion?
Oh, it should be up now, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we have all votes in. The motion is carried. So moving on to item 11.2, determination of petitions tabled at previous council meetings. We have none. So I've now advised that council intends to set as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. And the first motion before us is a development application at 28 Franklin Street, Richmond, warning and carport additions.
I'll move that, Mr Mayor.
Alderman Mulder had his hand up first. And Alderman Mulder.
I'll second it. Turn his motion.
So who seconded it? Sorry?
I can duck.
Dean, Alderman Yarington, thank you. Alderman Mulder, you have the floor. You are muted.
Mr Mayor, I'd just like to put a point of order. Since when has having your hand up been the indicator that you were the first person to actually put the motion? I actually spoke with and where have we got that protocol in place that putting your hand up is actually the indicator of the first person to put the motion or otherwise the alternative motion?
I noticed Alderman Mulder's hand up before you spoke and therefore he was the first person. Cabal Tharank and as Chair, I've ruled that the first person indicating that they wanted to speak has the right.
Okay. Well, perhaps we need to clarify that for further meetings.
Well, it has become a practice over the last three or four meetings that we've had. So if we could take that as precedent if necessary, but clearly it's my recollection of the meeting procedures that the first person on their feet or to claim the attention of the Chair has the option. Okay, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move the motion. The alternative motion as foreshadowed at the agenda brief and circulated to members over the weekend.
Thank you. And do you wish to speak any further to it or?
Oh, Mr Mayor, you accepted a second before I'd even moved it. So I think the next step is to ask for a second.
Well, I actually took your hand up and comment as moving the motion.
Okay.
And Alderman Yarington has seconded it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I'll proceed. This particular development has been, is a single carport which is to be located on, very close to the boundary in Franklin Street. In regard to the setback, there are no other carports, it is conceded that there are no other carports that are this close to the boundary. The area is characterized by dwellings with solid walls and front entrances that are actually on the boundary. In regard to the style of building, this is not an obtrusive building consisting of, but consists of posts carrying a roof. The property is not heritage listed and the posts will be powder coated to match the dwelling, the same color as the dwelling. View lines are virtually uninterrupted due to the absence of walls and the structure will be surrounded by two large trees. The structures, so the structure itself will be fairly unobtrusive. The roof of the carport has a 30 degree pitch, which conforms to the dwelling and is consistent with the Georgian architecture of some of the village, but I might say not all the buildings have this feature. The original design for this carport, as submitted by the applicant, had a 15 degree pitch. But at the request of council officers, it was altered to 30 degree pitch. Similar structures have been built by this builder. And in fact, and one in them, there are two of them, I believe, in the heart of Anglesey Barracks. And they do not distract from the heritage values. Across the road, there is a brand new modern style home under construction with absolutely no attempt to reflect any features of Georgian architecture. And this house is not on its own in the area. This unobtrusive carport blends into its surroundings, is not unusual in the small setback and should be approved.
Thank you. Alderman Yarington. You are muted.
Right. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, just following off from Alderman Mulder's comments there, I mean, I look, my first look at the plans there and the way that they've tried to sort of tie it in with the look of the house. All the points made about the fact that, you know, I wasn't aware that the fact that they'd modified it or that the council staff had recommended modification of the pitch of the roof to match. And then it makes it more compelling that we should approve this. And I mean, look, I know we've got to be careful to protect the integrity of certain areas, but, you know, I mean, I think this just goes too far to suggest that every single house has got to look a particular way in a particular suburb. And I just don't agree with that in principle either, you know. And but look, I mean, on this one, I think they've made an effort to try and tie in with the existing house. They've made an effort to try and make it not too obtrusive. There's already existing examples of similar sort of things there. And I don't think we have any right to tell someone that they can't do what they want on their own land if it doesn't affect anyone else. So I strongly encourage my fellow Alderman to support this. I mean, I don't think there's any way it's going to harm or hinder or impact on the local community in any way. And I, you know, in this day and age, I think we should be encouraging people to get on and do developments, even though this is only a small one, but I fully support this and I think we should allow it to proceed.
Thank you. Other speakers? I don't have any hands up at the moment. Alderman Von Berto, I saw you wave your hand and your hand is up now. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, I can't support the alternative motion. The officers have looked in a very detailed and clear way at the planning controls. As a planning authority, we are required to uphold our planning scheme. This is about looking at the character and amenity of the area. It's looking at big principle issues. And that is what land use planning is about and that is what our scheme is about. I cannot support the alternative recommendation. I think that the reasoning behind the alternative recommendation is very poor and very limited. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I cannot support the alternate recommendation. The look and feel for Richmond is absolutely fundamental in keeping Richmond as an important point, part both of our city and for the businesses that operate there. And I think the reason that we have the heritage overlay and the reason that we maintain the look and feel in Richmond is to ensure that that area, the inner area of Richmond, keeps being as much a Georgian village as it possibly can be. And for the people who live there and the people who try to run businesses there, it is fundamentally important that we maintain that overlay and keep the planning controls consistent.
Thank you, Alderman Chong. Alderman Piers.
Thank you, Mayor. I am like Alderman Chong. I cannot support this. When I first read this and saw no representations, I thought, oh, well, this would be interesting. But when I had a look at the area and just looking at Franklin Street where carports are set back 9.7 metres, nine metres, 10 metres, and this is 0.45. Now, if this was a tight block, I may have a bit of sympathy for the applicant. But the size, the site is large. It's 1,927 square metres. Now, you cannot tell me on a block that size, that they could not have what they want inside their boundary and not protrude on the street. I really think that, you know, it is detrimental to historic culture of the area. I really cannot support it.
Thank you, Alderman Piers. Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I know this property very well. My partner and I actually looked at this late last year when I was on the market. And Alderman Piers is very correct. It is a very large block, but limited with the current layout of the home and the gardens there as to what you're actually able to do. And I think the solution being proposed here is sound. I think that the point Alderman Piers made, Mr Mayor, about no representations being received, there's a reason for that because people in Richmond very seriously value the historic way of the village. And I for one would be first to complain if this was inappropriate. It's not inappropriate, Mr Mayor. This is actually an enhancement, not only to this property, but to the area. There's a reason why no representations were received. I commend the applicant on this plan and very happy to support the alternate motion moved by Alderman Mulder.
Thank you. I see no other speakers. So write a reply, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a couple of points. It's been made that the planning controls are there because, you know, because the character and amenity of the area. And I'm all for that, but if so, it should have been applied to all the buildings in the area, particularly those that are under construction at the moment. Those buildings, that building across the road has made no attempt by facade or pitch of the roof to fit in with that particular area. Unlike this particular development where the pitch of the roof has been adjusted and the unobtrusive posts that form the, you know, that are unobtrusive and have been color matched to the house to blend in with the circumstances. The look and feel of Richmond is a diverse set of buildings. And this one does nothing to detract from the Georgian architecture of the house at which it's attached. There were no representations. And that is really an interesting point in a community like Richmond, which is so active in terms of developments. This is why they came out en masse in relation to a very, very modern subdivision. This is why they are behind me when I am trying to move for the Western Bypass at Richmond because they see that that is what those things, diversion of traffic, are more important to maintaining the feel and nature of Richmond, particularly its Heritage Bridge and the, you know, the central, the main road through the town. Those are the sorts of things we can do as a council to protect the heritage value of Richmond. Just telling someone that they cannot build an unobtrusive carport when they have gone out of their way to match the structure is simply nonsensical and doesn't make a good case. I urge support for the alternative motion.
Thank you. Could I have a voting box for an approval, please?
It's coming up now, Mayor.
Thank you. One more vote required. The motion is carried and that concludes our business as a planning authority. Moving on to financial management. The next item on the agenda is 11.6.1, the estimates for the capital expenditure program fees and charges. There are parts A, B and C. And unless anyone feels strongly, I'd like to deal with them as one motion. In that case, could I have a mover and a second please? Moved, Alderman Piers.
I'll second them, Mr Mayor.
Seconded, Alderman Chong. Thank you. Alderman Piers, would you like to speak, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I think we've had many goes at this and I think we don't really need to discuss it any further tonight because I think we've been through it enough times as we've spent many hours on the whole budget process. So this is our expenditure fees and charges. So I'm support the motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I guess I'd just like to commend the staff and my fellow colleagues for the amount of work that has gone into producing this information. And whilst I'm sure none of us are entirely happy with everything that we've had to do, this is a good outcome both for the council and for our ratepayers. And I see council support.
Are there any other speakers, please? Now, Alderman Blomley, followed by Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I particularly like to commend the CFO at her team. It's been challenging times for all of us, but particularly to the CFO, I think it's she and her team done a sterling job. To the general manager and to Mr Graham with the capital expenditure program. But also the colleagues, as Alderman Chong correctly points out. Yeah, there's that saying that, you know, making laws or making decisions like this is a bit like watching sausages being made. But I think where we've learned today is a brat was to be proud of. As Mr Mayor was featured in the Mercury recently, we'll be delivering a fantastic outcome in financial terms for the city because of the strong financial management of our GM and his team, but also us as directors as well. So I think it's something that the process hasn't been without its bruises for a few of us. But it's been a fantastic process and I've enjoyed, you know, I've had a few losses, as we all have. But the process has been, I think, a very good one. It's been robust. But we've landed in a really good spot. So I'd just love to say in closing, thank you particularly to the CFO, but all of the team and the leaders of council.
Thank you. Alderman Walker.
Look, too many rate settings is never enough. And this is part one of the, not the trilogy, but the four series we have following up at 6.2 rates and charges financial year. Then we go to governance with rates and charges policy, fees and charges, non rates policy. So still a little bit of time for some debate on those other points. Just a couple of things. With these estimates, the point to note is they're wrong. They're wrong in as much as they're a forecast. And where you start a year isn't where you finish a year. But what these estimates have done is, if you like, give us some contingency for the challenges that may still be ahead. And they're pretty big. There is a lot of talk about the financial cliff around September when job seeker might reduce and job keeper goes. It could be other waves of COVID or other events that come at you from sideways. So it's important to note that should those, we hope that no other events will happen, but should they happen, unlike some other entities, we have some capacity to potentially deal with that. So I do appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. Part of these estimates is done on the premise, Mr Mayor, that there won't be an increase to wages and salaries of staff through you to either the GM or finance team. Have you, I guess I'll salaries of staff through you to either the GM or finance team. Have you, I guess Alderman allowances are set separately to council, but, and we don't know what they will be for the year. How many, have you, how many formal notifications have you had from Alderman that they would wish to waive any increase in the Alderman allowance should one be attributed?
Thank you for the question through you, Mayor. I'm only aware of one at the moment.
Okay. The other point is that to get on to a balanced OpEx programme, and I think Alderman Blomley alluded to this, that it was somewhat bruising at times. There were often, for the community's benefit, lots of discussions, often down to very small quantums of money. And sometimes we needed to actually deliberate in the form of a poll to figure out some things coming in or out. And that relates to programmes, projects, and initiatives. Mr Mayor, through you, of those items that Alderman voted to remove, can I please have any advice on which ones may have actually been returned into the programme? And if any of the items that we suggested be taken out have been put back, on what basis would that have occurred?
Thank you. I'll pass this to the chief financial officer, but it's my understanding that Alderman have seen all the ins and outs as we've been through up until what's presented tonight. CFO?
Thank you for the question, Alderman Walker. As you have stated, there was a lot of work that had been undertaken and deliberations. Those items that were either deferred or reduced have not gone back into the estimates. We required to make those adjustments in order to achieve the outcome as set by the budget guidelines provided by Alderman.
Thank you. So I can have comfort that no items that we voted and removed out have been refunded and put back in.
Correct.
Thank you. Look, I'll just get to my ramble now, because I'm probably running out of time. Look, one of the things that I've heard through this process is that this council has a lazy balance sheet. And I do take some umbrage with that. The balance sheet that this council has is fit, and it's fit through a diet of sustainable rating. It is fit through a workout, through the automatic budget process each and every year, and the highly competent feedback that we get from staff. And I commend all staff for giving us frank and fearless advice at all times, even when we haven't liked it, sometimes we haven't followed it. But it is a credit to them to tell us how they see things in plain and clear and certain terms, and I thank them for that. So again, I would say we have a fit balance sheet. And if the idea that that's lazy, to me, is absurd. If you want to, if you want the colery, well, it's the balance sheet of some of our colleagues that would get puffed walking up four or five stairs. The budgets that are basically chain smokers and eating five burgers a day as far as financial management goes. So I think that council as a team have done a good job as to work through all this. We are setting ourselves up with some contingency for some rough weather that comes along. And it is, it's not necessarily about, you know, wizardry. This is where we get to through hard work over the years and incredibly finicky, detailed budgeting process. So I hope the community can rightfully have confidence in where we sit now, that we still have some capacity to help out, certainly with hardship and potential other initiatives. But it's not through anything around financial laziness. It is the complete opposite.
Thanks, Alderman Walker. Alderman Edmonds?
Yep, just very briefly, I'll use this as a chance to sort of address this broadly. Completely agree with whoever it was who said it was a worthwhile experience. It wasn't always fun, pretty bruising. You know, also to put my hand up for being a bit grumpy at different times, but I'm sure we've all had that rollercoaster throughout this process. Not everyone gets their way, and I guess that's the interesting thing about local government is that you're one of 12 people, aren't you? I have made these comments privately, so I'll say them here now. It is disappointing about the policy around staff renumeration. We'll all say what a great job everyone's done, but at the end of the day, there wasn't much wiggle room there, was there? And then everyone I'm looking at on the screen does get a pay rise, apart from those who might wish to forego it. I think...
Just a point of order there, Alderman Edmonds. We don't know yet. We don't know what the outcome of the tribunal is. It may well be that the tribunal does not recommend an increase to us. So it's an assumption I wouldn't necessarily make.
Okay, well, I'll withdraw that part then. You know, I think the process, though, just get back on to the positive. I think we'll all be better for this in the years to come. It was a way bigger peak behind the curtain than we got the year before. And I think that there's some barnacles out there that should be nervous when we come back through next year. And, you know, I know some things were put into recess and some things were cut completely. I look forward to, if we can get into a better budget position, that we can bring some of these programmes back, or perhaps, as a few of us have spoken about, look at how more effectively we can use that revenue. You know, passive rec is somewhere where I'd like to see a lot of money going in the years to come. You know, but overall, I would also like to thank everyone for, and I'll echo what Alderman Walker said about the GM and also other staff, that they will put a position and then it's up to us to sort of hammer it out. And I think that they should never probably shirk from that attitude. So thanks, everyone. Here's to next year.
Thank you. Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I'd like to echo Alderman Edmonds' comments. I too sat through at least two six-hour budget sessions, which weren't as painful as I thought they would be, and I didn't fall asleep in one of them. There was some very robust discussion. Like Alderman Edmonds, I'd like to put on the record things that I've said privately, which is that I am disappointed that some community programmes were cut, particularly when we're talking about relatively small amounts of money, and yet we didn't see the same sort of equity in cuts to other programmes. I think we will need those community programmes later in the year. I was pleased to see council put some funding aside for contingencies later in the year, but I would urge council to consider that if we travel better than expected, that we bring those programmes back in sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Von Berta?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I would really like to express my thanks to the general manager and to the CFO and to the other senior officers within council. I believe that they have actually guided us in a very diplomatic and strong manner in the way that we deliberated the budget. They gave us, as others have said, frank and fearless advice, and made us really think and consider before we acted. I also would like to thank past councils and past general, well, a past general manager that I've worked with and a past CFO that I've worked with, because it's through their work that we have the budget that we have. And I agree with Alderman Walker in terms of our strong position. I also agree with Alderman Warren. I feel that we have actually cut community development programmes and also programmes in the arts and culture area that I don't believe we needed to do so. And I feel in the circumstances that we're in at this particular point in time, in the next few months to a year, and perhaps even longer, we're going to need those programmes even more than ever. And so I will be looking in the future to seeing whether or not we can reinstitute a number of those programmes that we have cut sooner rather than later. I feel that we have had a hard time in terms of coming to the budget that we have, and that in general, we have a budget that will see us through to the next year, but we'll have more work to do in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Write a reply. Sorry, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If we listen to the media, Clarence Council has found the magic pudding. We've frozen our rates, increased our capital expenditure without going into debt. I'm sure that every government and business in the world would like to know how we managed to reduce income, increase spending, and yet deliver a balanced budget. Widely touted as a unique event in the current environment. But Clarence does not have a magic pudding. And we really do need to acknowledge in all of this, the state government is providing significant interest-free loans to fund the increased capital expenditure. As the loans are interest-free for three years, they will appear much later in our cash flow as debt. Council has the reserves to pay those loans back before the interest clock starts, but those reserves are the result, I would argue, of overtaxing in the past. Indeed, prior to last year, our residential rates were some 15% above those of comparable cities of Glenorkie and Kingra. My fear with this stimulus is that it is occurring and being perpetrated by all levels of government in all jurisdictions. Now Tasmania was struggling to find construction companies to deliver the projects before COVID-19. The case, the Royal Hobart Hospital is a case in point. My fear is that with a surplus of projects and a shortage of capacity to build them, the governments will be competing against each other across the country to get work done. Consequently, contractors will be in a position to demand higher prices, and we will almost be in a position where government entities are tendering, trying to get their projects built. So there's a word of caution in there going on down the track. And I wonder whether we are going to have the fortitude when the time comes in and the tenders come back and if they're way over what we anticipated they were going to be, that we will have the fortitude to say no. And then they can go off and we can wait for a more conducive time to build these, to build these projects. In terms of the allowances, I find that that was perhaps not a genuine, was a little disingenuous. I will not be taking any increases in allowance this year, irrespective of the tribunal process. And I think that is appropriate, and I don't think it's a matter that we ought to all be standing up here trying to claim credit for. There's a tribunal decision to be made, Mr Mayor, and you are right, and I think we should allow that to run its course. As regards to people taking it, this has to be an individual decision. Some have been severely impacted by COVID and will continue to be. Although I have my own income stream, my family, for example, lost, you know, my son was a builder and he was put off. My, I had some of my family working in the hospital, and so, you know, and my own wife was actually stood down without any pay from her work as a result. So it really is a question for individuals to be made and not something to be grandstanding about. So having said that, of course, I will support the budget, but there's just a word of caution. This is not a magic pudding.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder. Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Peers.
Thank you, Mayor. I sort of got off the track many times there, but look, what some of the Aldermen said is quite right. The next couple of years, it's going to be tough. And this year, we had to make hard decisions. And there were some tough decisions, and I do congratulate the staff, all the staff and Aldermen. But I can tell you now, as we're being warned, next year will probably be just as tough. You want to bring everything back, but I don't think we're going to be able to bring everything back. And one thing I'm proud to say, that when I got on this council, we're in debt. And I'm pleased to say that we now, compared to a lot of other councils, are leading the way. And we've been able to do things and we've got a zero rate increase. So I reckon that's a tremendous effort. Well done, everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So if I could have a voting box up, that the estimates for the financial year 2021, as attached the agenda to be adopted, that the capital equipment programme for the financial year 2021 attached as attachment two to be adopted, and that the new list of fees and charges attached as attachment three be adopted.
Voting box is up, Mayor.
Thank you. One vote outstanding. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. So moving on to eleven point six point two, that the, we set the rates and charges applying to city properties for the financial year. And there's items A one through to 10. If I could have a mover and a seconder, please?
I'll move it, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Newington. Do I have a seconder, Alderman Edmonds? Thank you. Alderman Newington, would you like to speak to it?
Look, only to say that, yeah, I'm sure we all are glad to get this part of the process for the year behind us. I think we've done a, you know, put a lot of time and effort into thinking carefully about all these things. And the work done by the staff, I'm sure they are pretty relaxed to see this finally get to council and get it approved. You know, I think, you know, the amount of detail in here, it's too much to talk about in a motion. So I just encourage everyone to support it so we can get on with the next stage of our year, which is making all the things we've got in the Capital Works Programme and the master planning side of things happen, and then, you know, do our best to deal with whatever comes next. So, you know, well done to the council staff that have put all the time and effort into to get us to this point.
Thank you.
After the work. Thank you.
Alderman Peers?
Edmonds?
I'm sorry, Alderman Edmonds. It was that seconded. Thank you, Alderman Chong.
I'd nothing further to add. Thank you.
Any other speakers? In that case, I guess there's no need for a write of, Alderman Walker? You're muted, Alderman Walker?
Yeah, you didn't miss much. This is the charges policy. Different councils do it differently. People notice in here the fixed charge component. That is one of the measures that we use to make capital value, which is inherently superior method of rating, more reasonable and equitable. Yes, different councils have been rating a lot less for a lot longer, but their balance sheets are shot. You have to make a choice on what your value proposition is. It might be very low rates and lower levels of service, or it might be high rates and notionally higher services. Although I note some councils with nearly three times the budget that we have, don't necessarily deliver actually many tangible extra services to their community. So I think we do get it right. It isn't, it's complicated and it's very difficult to come up with the most elegant way forward. But I stick with capital value on a fixed charge. I would have liked to stretch it a bit further around not perhaps loading up on waste by that very small component, which might only work out to a few dollars per household per year. But I think if we don't do that, which I guess is an option, it just potentially means that there's going to be a bigger and compounding burden in the next lot of rates. And I think it would be very interesting, not so much to see the ratings of and charges of other councils this year, but to see what they're looking like for their next financial year, because that is going to be a profoundly challenging thing for some.
Thank you. Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Newington? You're muted. Okay, I'll take it as a no need. In that case, could we have a voting box then to set the fees and charges?
Our voting box is up, Mayor.
Thank you. The motion is carried unanimously. And can I take this opportunity as we finish up on the financial management items? General Manager, would you please accept from all the council, I think all Aldermen have spoken to it, our thanks and appreciation for the effort of you and your staff in taking us through this budget preparation process at such a difficult time. Your advice has been very much appreciated and the support you've given has also been very much appreciated. If you could convey that, please.
I will thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman. We're certainly passing that on. And thank you to everyone involved. You were very much appreciated.
Thank you. So moving now on to governance, item 11.7.1 is that a council adopts an updated rates and charges policy. If I could have a mover and seconder, please. Moved, Alderman Chong.
Second, Wendy.
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Chong.
I don't think there's a great deal to add. I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman Kendy.
Yes, I support that. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other speakers? In that case, there's no need for a write of reply.
Nope.
I have a voting box, please.
It should be up now, Mayor.
One to go. Motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to 11.7.2, as a council adopts fees and charges for non-rates, adopts a policy for that. Moved, Alderman Blomley.
I'll second it, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Newington. Alderman Blomley?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. This is fairly straightforward. This is about good governance. As colleagues are aware, as we're advised in our agenda papers, council doesn't presently have a policy for the setting of fees and charges at non-rates. This policy before us this evening has been developed to guide council setting of fees and charges to provide for a consistent, fair and equitable process and to ensure compliance with statutory requirements in council policies, rather. It's a sound piece of governance and I'm happy to move the officer's recommendation this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I, one thing I am looking forward to as part of this process, I mean, we've got to have a framework around how we set the rates and charges, but you know, when you look through it all and some of the variations between different, similar services or similar locations or similar venues, they've got totally different rates. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity in the coming months to rationalise the whole fees and charges schedule, because I think it's something that we need to look at. I mean, you know, in any business or operation over time, you tend to add new services, new charges and new things all the time. And I think it's time that we need to scale it back. And I look forward to the opportunity to do that in the next few months, which I know we've made a decision to go down that path. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? I concede no one, so there's no need for a write of reply. Could we have a voting box, please, General Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Should be coming up now. It's up now.
The motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to 11.7.3, that council approves the updated COVID-19 financial hardship policy and authorises the GM to assess and approve claims. Moved, Alderman Walker. Seconded, Alderman Chong. Alderman Walker.
To be, if we're talking about the hand raising, I'm pretty sure Alderman Edmonds was up before mine.
Okay, thank you for deferring, Alderman Edmonds.
Thank you. That's very gracious. Yeah, I just, this is a slam dunk and it's the best thing that we've done throughout the whole process. You talk to anyone, they might not want rivers of gold coming out of the council coffers, but they do want to know that if things hit the fan for them, that they can seek some support. And I can speak from personal experience that the financial impacts of this might happen, but they take a few months to flow through, as I think Alderman Mulder touched on. So, you know, and I know that we, originally there was quite slow uptake on this and I just think having it up people's sleeve for another 12 months is fantastic. And I really thank the CFO and GM for both pursuing this as an idea, but also listening to us when we've talked about it as well. You know, we've talked about cliffs, you know, people are going to have to start paying for their childcare soon, Jobkeeper's going to go out, we could have second waves of the illness. I just think that if we can have this up our sleeve as something that where we can steer people who are in strife and that we can actually, as our, the staff that we trust to do their job, can treat them with respect and hopefully help them through this pandemic, then I really think it's the best thing that we can do. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I echo Alderman Edmund's comments. I think people don't know yet what the impact is likely to be and it isn't going to play out in next week or next month. It's likely to be some months before these things happen. And I think having this policy in place for the next year gives flexibility, gives capacity for people and takes away some stress if things do go wrong for them.
Thank you. Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to commend all of us and the staff on the work that we did on the hardship policy. I think it's a very good piece of work and perhaps it's worth keeping down the track because, you know, it's not just a pandemic, but everyone goes through personal circumstances where they might require some relief. And at least now, we've got a policy surrounding when we're likely to do that, rather than just as a case-by-case basis. I think as Sir Humphrey Appleby would also say, it's also very courageous. Unlike other levels of government, we can't, we don't have the ability to change the mix of rates to, you know, like income tax and, you know, or GST or those sorts of things. At local government level, we are basically stuck to this one rating thing, which is actually a property tax, a land tax, that is based on wealth, but not necessarily cash flow. And I think that having these sorts of policies and these sorts of flexibilities is really good from a governance point of view, but it's also a very risky exercise when you've only got one means of raising revenue.
Thank you. Alderman Von Berto.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, through you to the General Manager, could I actually get an explanation as to why in part nine, it's been changed? It actually says if a person makes an application for relief in accordance with this policy, council, and it's been changed from will to may ask the person to provide evidence that they are suffering genuine financial hardship.
Through you, Mayor. Alderman Von Berto, thank you for the question. The change has been suggested because it gives an element of discretion where the circumstances are obvious or very difficult to assess. So in those two circumstances, for example, someone may come forward with an explanation that is plain to see that they are in hardship and therefore asking them for further evidence would be unfair or unjust in some way and just prolongs the discomfort for that person. And equally, we've found there are people who in other circumstances really don't have a lot of evidence other than what they're able to tell us. So they don't necessarily have a lot of documentation to substantiate their circumstance. So what we're suggesting is that a degree of latitude within the policy to make a judgment call on that at this point in time would be beneficial.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Other speakers? In that case, write a reply?
Just very briefly, that's good to have that degree of latitude in there. And also I think that Alderman Mulder's point about the policy ongoing is certainly something that I'd be willing to listen more to.
Thank you. Could I have a voting box, please, GM, for the approval of the amended updated financial hardship policy?
Thank you, Mayor. The voting box is up now.
The motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to 11.7.4, a leased facility at Rossney Park Public Golf Course, that we renew the lease. Do I have any move and seconder, please? Moved, Alderman Edmonds.
Have it a second, Mayor.
Alderman Kendy, seconded. Thank you. Alderman Edmonds?
Thank you. Yeah, this is obviously one that's aired out a bit in the public sphere, which is always good. I think what we've got here is a scenario where the council is spending a similar amount of money than we would to maintain a space that provided no benefit other than the green space itself, you know, a situation that would see the greens raked in and the like. This, to my understanding, is a way of saying, let's keep this going, but it's also sounding a bit of a warning bell to say that, you know, this is not going to be a continual dollar figure that's going to be spent maintaining the course on behalf of others. I think there's latitude for discretion around if there's a huge repair bill that, you know, things might be reconsidered. But, you know, I think also that we've got to consider that there are benefits to having the course in operation. It's far more accessible to people who only use public transport, say for example, than heading out into the sticks. It does provide an affordable way to play. It's now up to, I guess, the YMCA to figure out a way to make it more tenable and more modern in its operations, I suppose, to where it's not at the point where they have to be putting their hand out for support. And I thoroughly encourage them to do that so that it's not a case of coming back here when this term expires.
Thank you. Alderman Kendy?
Yes, I'm very comfortable where the recommendation has landed. I had some concerns about where we may have been heading at one stage, but I'm comfortable with this. And yes, I commend the recommendation and support it.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Look, it, there was no real easy way forward with this. We acknowledge the long-term operations of the golf course and its enjoyment over time. But the situation, it's found itself out. So this is our way of treating the best way forward, given the projections and the circumstances. And the risk management around the irrigation system is the prudent, reasonable way forward. So it's just one of those decisions council have to make.
Thank you. Alderman Newington?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I think, you know, I'm really excited by the opportunity to look at what the land could possibly use for down the track. I know it's disappointing for those people that play golf, but personally, I have a very strong position on the fact that council should really only be involved in those activities that are our core activities and that are not provided in the community by other parties. And when you look at golf, you could hardly say that there's not plenty of choice out there for people to play golf. While, you know, it may be valid to suggest that some people don't have as easy access or have got public transport, can't get to other golf courses as easily. I mean, look, you know, we can't, like I said, we can't be everything to everyone. And I think this gives us an opportunity to give the YMCA a chance to gradually scale down their operations, as a community and a council to look at what we can best use the land for. And we're giving people a bit of notice, you know, in terms of moving forward and rather than just shutting it down. And I think as Alderman Edmunds mentioned, you know, the cost for us just to have it sitting there without being using it at all would be about the same. So I think it's a reasonable outcome. But, you know, I would encourage, you know, the rest of the community to get behind the whole debate about the City Heart. And we come up with some, you know, while we might be looking at potentially taking away one activity from the city, I think the opportunity is for us to come up with some other uses for that piece of land and some things that we can do in there that are going to be even bigger and better than what we've got at the moment, is a pretty exciting opportunity for us to have moving forward. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Although the motion doesn't actually say so, this will be the end of golf here. 10 months was asked and 10 months was given. And the reason for the 10 months was so that they can continue on through the busy period, knowing full well that they will become completely unviable after that period. The 10 months was asked to enable staff redeployment so that suddenly they weren't all thrown out without any opportunity for other work within this not-for-profit organisation. But the City Heart consultation has yet to occur. This is pristine Central Park stuff. There are lots of things that can be done here. This is prime open space. I can imagine small active areas, maybe even a golf driving range and a putting green, but only one. Small areas of dedicated parks for all abilities, for special ages. And we've talked in the past about parks for youths, parks for older people and parks for young people. So here we are. Here is an opportunity to create trails, to create walks, nature trails, interpretation, to take in some of the area, a respite from the hustle and bustle of that, what I might say now looks horribly inappropriate, replaced eastlands. What about a music bowl in the area? So outdoor concerts could be held there so that we can have a central area with lots of room. What about a cultural precinct, an historic precinct focused on the Rossney Barn and the attending buildings? These things are overshadowed by a 1970s brick clubhouse, which is completely out of keeping with what we could be, our cultural, social and historic heart. I, you know, and I feel for it. Being now a member of that particular golf club, I won't be able to go up there with Alderman James on the occasional hit around the course after April. But I think you'll find that there are public golf courses at Richmond, the Richmond Valley Course, and also the one, the community one at South Arm, so that there are plenty of opportunities to pursue that sport. I feel for those who find it terribly convenient to go on there and play golf, but you are looking at a very, very valuable real estate. It should not be made for the exclusive use of some people all the time. It ought to be open for the public and ratepayers' funds should be used to support all ratepayers, which is an interesting point when we come to talk about squash centres, but that's another topic.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder. Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do support this motion.
I do support this motion. I'd just like to make a point of clarification. Some of the other speakers talking about this as a valuable piece of real estate that could be misinterpreted. And a number of members of the community have raised concerns with me that if this is no longer a golf course, that it would be sold off to private developers. I don't know where they would get the impression that Clarence Council would do that. But my understanding is, and perhaps the General Manager can clarify this, that there is a covenant or something on the land that requires that it is only used for community purposes. So it is, will maintain sort of more of a park-type use than a housing use. If you could clarify that, please. Mr Nelson.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, Alderman Warren. Yes, I can clarify that the majority of the Rosney Golf Course land is subject to a community purpose covenant. The land must be used for a community purpose. There is a small section of it down towards where the golf club building is that isn't part of that land. But the vast majority of it is subject to that community purpose requirement.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Piers.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, we're talking about City Heart and some ideas, but we've already discussed in future motions we've moved tonight how tough the budget's going to be for the next so many years. And I'm just wondering, and it is only a thought, that if YMCA do pull out of this agreement and they want to leave, I'm just wondering if we should consider trying to lease it out for, as a golf course, for another two, three years, just so the interest is. Because we're not going to have money to do a lot of those City Heart projects that were mentioned by different Aldermen tonight. And it's just another thought, Mayor.
Yeah, it's a thought that needs to be borne in mind as we go down the track and see how things unfold. Alderman Piers, I agree. Write a reply. Alderman Edmonds.
Yeah, how could I have forgotten to mention the spectre of City Heart in amongst all this? And I'll just say to anyone who's scratching their head about what that is, you could Google CCC City Heart and it'll take you right there. Because I think we need as many voices as possible in that discussion. I think, you know, there are a lot of possibilities for this space, but in terms of this motion, it's dealing with the next, what, ten months? And to that end, I think we all do agree that this is the best way forward for that period of time.
Thank you. The recommendation is to extend the lease to the 30th of April 21. Could I have a box to reflect the voting, please, General Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. It should be up now, 11.7.4. Yep, it's up.
The motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to 11.7.5, opportunity to approve a network, a TAS networks easement at 85 Vivian Drive Rugby. If I could have a move in a second, please? Moved Alderman Blomley, I think it was. Seconded Alderman Walker. Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As per the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Alderman Walker.
When TAS networks come really knocking on your door with requests like this, there's really only one question that you can ask them, which is, do you want a hand with it? It's usually take it or leave it. But in any case, this is a reasonable way forward with something that we probably really wouldn't have that much discretion with anyway.
Thank you. I can't see any other speakers. So could we have the voting box, please?
It's up now, Mayor.
Thank you. It's carried unanimously. Moving on to item 12, Alderman's question time, there are no matters on notice. 12.3, answers to questions without notice to the previous council meeting. I propose that they be taken as read. So questions without notice. May I start with the Deputy Mayor, Alderman Chong?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I have two questions this evening. The first one is, following the 17 March 2020 deadline for submissions to the Clarence Draft Local Provision schedule, can either you or the General Manager advise when council will have an opportunity to formally consider the submissions received?
General Manager.
Thank you, Alderman Blomley. I might ask Mr Lovell to respond to that, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. A detailed review of the representations will be circulated to Aldermen this week. The report will then be considered in a workshop during July and after the Aldermen have had some time to read it. The intention is then to refer the report to the following council meeting for determination, provided the workshop doesn't raise any matters that would require a further workshop. So we're aiming for the council meeting in July.
Thank you, Mr Lovell. Mr Mayor, my second question is, I refer to the recently commissioned Stormwater Report for the Lordedale area that I understand was received by council in mid-June. Can you or the General Manager please advise when Aldermen will be provided a copy of the report and the timeframe associated with consideration of the report's findings?
General Manager.
Thank you again for the question, Alderman Blomley. I'll ask Mr Graham to respond to that.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Council's received Stormwater Management Plans for seven of our urban catchments and our engineers are finishing the last one, being Richmond in our own resources. Each management plan identifies considerable stormwater challenges to be met by council in the long term. And there's quite significant work for us to go through each of the management plans, summarise these and recommend findings to council. The likely timing of this with our workload is to be the end of 2020. The next action, as with the council adopted Stormwater Management Plans, is for council to offer us to actually compile all the respective flood maps and to go through council through a workshop to show the flood risk communication strategy, which was discussed at a workshop last year. We wish to present this to council this year, will be most likely in August, in terms of publicly releasing the flood risk maps to the community.
Okay. Alderman Edmonds.
Thanks very much. I've just got a question about Worksworth Park. Works have began again on that site. Do we have any advice on a delivery date and whether that's been adjusted because of the holdups?
General Manager.
Unless Mr Graham is aware of anything, Mayor, I'm not aware of any holdup or delivery date. The project is a Department of Education project, it's on their land, with a third party. So most of the details are with them, I'm afraid.
No worries. And in a completely different direction, fire pits. A lot of conflicting advice about people having fire pits in their backyard. And I noticed that Bunnings is flogging them on their advertising. Are regular sort of suburban families breaking the law if they have a fire pit in their backyard which they light?
Through you, Mayor. I might ask Mr Tui if he's got a response to that. Otherwise, we might need to take that on notice.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'll take that on notice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Newington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just be interested to find out from the GM whether there's any work being done on the food van issue in relation to on the coastal trail on council land. That was part of my motion that was passed a few meetings ago in relation to Belray Beach and looking at that as soon as the restrictions are reduced, whether we can get that into a workshop or whether there's any work already been started on it by council staff.
Thank you for the question, Alderman Newington. At this point in time, I would need to follow up on what work's been done. But we are starting to schedule meetings now that the workshop sessions, now that the budget is out of the way. So I'll take that on notice and give you a firmer response over the course of next week.
Thank you.
Alderman Kennedy.
Hello?
Yes, we've got you loud and clear.
Yeah, something really weird went on with my screen then. But anyway, as long as you can hear me. Just a very quick question with regards to staff and how they've been, not how they've been coping during this difficult time, but yes, how they've been coping. But how many are still sort of working from home or working remotely?
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy. Through you, Mayor. It's a difficult number to put an exact number on. We're probably at around about 50% capacity at the moment. So as the rules change in terms of numbers within confined spaces, we're obviously reviewing things. But we're also taking a very flexible approach so that we're not having a lot of people come back into the building. So we've got people moving through in a more of a sort of rostered type way rather than back here permanently every day of the week, if that makes some sense. So it's a very flexible approach at the moment.
Thank you very much for that. And I'm sorry that my screen has just done something really crazy, but thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mauder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Last year, council passed a motion, I believe it may have even been unanimously, to review the urban growth boundary policy. And I think it was referred to the Local Government Association. What steps have been taken to have that review conducted? What's the progress of it?
General Manager.
I might ask Mr Lovell if he can provide an update on that.
I'm sorry, Mr Mayor, I was having trouble with my computer. Can I just have that question repeated, please?
Alderman Mauder, would you like to repeat the question, please?
Now, that was a good test, wasn't it, eh? Last year, council passed a motion to review the urban growth boundary policy. I believe it was going to be referred to the Local Government Association of Tasmania to take up with the state government and the planning committee, the state government. What steps have been taken to conduct this review?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I would have to say, in real terms, there's been very little movement on it. As we indicated in a previous council meeting, the responsibility for reviewing the urban growth boundary and the regional strategy within which it fits is actually a task that is dedicated in law to the Minister for Planning and is carried out for him by the Planning Policy Unit. In our recent discussions in various meetings, the planning policy unit has revealed that it has no timeline for reviewing the strategy or indeed the urban growth boundary because there are other tasks it intends to undertake first, which involve developing some state planning policies. And as they don't have a timeline for completing that work, they're unable to offer us a timeline on completing the review of the strategy. However, councils, through the Greater Hobart Act, are doing everything they can to encourage that work to get underway. It was discussed as recently as last Thursday. And so hopefully we'll get some more news in the short term.
Mr Mayor, the motion we passed didn't relate to a review of the strategy. It related to a review of the policy. So the fact that we're going to have a policy at all, that was the question. So having said that, is there any documentary evidence or agenda items of any of these bodies or meetings where it's actually appeared and where we can see decisions? Or is this just general discussion around these points?
Look, I will follow that up with LGAT and get a circulated memo to all Aldermen as part of the weekly briefing report, Alderman Mauder. So I'll take that on notice and get back as your LGAT rep. Okay, Alderman Piers.
Thank you, Mayor. One of my questions has already been answered. The other one is, have we appointed an architect yet for the Lindisfarne Change Rooms complex?
Mr Graham.
Through you, Mr Mayor. We're just finalising the assessment process and I will discuss them with the GM. We intend to complete that this week and engage an architect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Von Beto.
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First one in relation to consultations around the South Arm Master Plan, which I believe in recent weeks, some community members have received correspondence on. Is council's process through this likely to be a vox pop on the issues? Or would you be more looking at a qualitative approach of investigating specific concerns and concepts on a case-by-case basis?
Thank you for the question, Alderman Walker. I'm not entirely sure where the question's heading, but maybe if I can answer it in the sense that we have circulated some suggested issues and designs as part of the consultation and we intend to bring the full scope of those, the feedback we receive from members of the community back to council for a workshop, probably within three or four weeks of the consultation concluding.
Oh, thank you. Look, it was largely around the process of how much waiting just generic form responses have versus nuanced and, you know, worked through ones. But my second question relates to the fact that this council nearly a year ago unanimously passed by those in the room at the time, the motion that I moved around reduce illegal dumping or rid squats. And part of that motion was to convey it through to Waste Strategy South. Now, given it's been a year, can you give me an update on how that has progressed, please?
Unless Mr Graham has something to add, I'll need to take that on notice.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Well, Waste Strategy South as a group isn't really, I don't think, Mr General Manager, meeting as much anymore because we've got the Southern Group MOU operating. So I did report it to the Southern Waste Council, but I didn't get a response back. But I'll follow up further.
We'll take that on notice, Alderman Walker.
We'll maybe ask for six grand back if they haven't done anything. Thank you.
Alderman Warren.
Nothing. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you all very much. That brings us to the end of our open meeting. I'd like to thank the members of the public for staying with us to this point. In accordance with local government meeting regulations, we are required to consider some confidential matters in closed session.